You ready there?
Yep. Good evening. My name is Joseph, Mayor Joseph Aldean. This is a June 18th, 2024 meeting of the Council of the Borough of Madison, New Jersey. Pursuant to Section 5, open public meetings, that I have been notified of this meeting as intended by the President. I posted a notification, yeah, in the press on January 5th, 2024. I sent a notice to State Legislature by posting. A copy of said notice is and has been available to the public in this ongoing review for the Borough Clerk. A copy of said notice has also been sent to such matters of other guys have requested such information in order to stay. Mayor, could I report, please?
Councilperson David Dunn? Present. Councilperson Stephen Russell is absent due to work restrictions tonight. Councilperson Alden Pyrus?
Present.
Councilperson Brian Lycett?
Present.
Councilperson Melvin Wong is absent, conceived him due to illness. Councilperson Charles Ross?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
May I be present, please, just wait? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chief, may I stand for more standing? At this time, give it to the floor for agenda I am doing.
I just need the microphone.
Don't get my phone.
Thank you, Fran.
You're welcome.
So I'm looking at John Serto, 29 Crescent Place, Madison, New Jersey. So Resolution 24-0614 authorizing the Madison Police Department to close roads and file necessary applications with appropriate agencies for various community events. That leads me to believe that these permits were not getting pulled from the county and roads were being closed at the whim of whomever decided to close the road down. It's interesting that after we brought this up at the last council meeting, that now it's a resolution authorizing the police, but it should not have been an author- it should always have been that the county needs to be contacted. So I'm really glad that this is on here, but I think it should have been on here a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else come to the floor?
Suzanne Reynolds, based in Madison. So regarding Resolution 24-0614, the special events, community events and the road closures, so since that was brought up last time by myself, I just wanted to know, since it was brought up in with this, Mr. Metta and Councilman Lycett brought up the special events committee being involved in this. So Mr. Metta had gone down a list of people that are involved in that committee. I was wondering if we could revisit that. Who is included in that special events committee for the road closures and those special events?
Sure, let me pull up the ordinance and I'll give you the exact listing of all those that are on the special events committee.
Actually, I have the ordinance.
Check the two.
Yeah, two, thirty-nine point one. So in there is included a member of the community, which wasn't mentioned. I was curious, who is the resident in the borough that resides on that?
To be honest, since I've been here and I have no knowledge of my predecessor ever holding or convening a special events committee.
There's not been a meeting?
No.
Can I ask why, since that was part of like revolving around this?
I quite frankly don't understand why that was brought up because that's not the procedure that's taken. So I can't speak to why Mr. Metta brought that up.
Okay, and so then there's no resident on the committee, right?
There is no resident, there's no appointment that I'm aware of to this committee.
So how do we go about doing that? Because I know that there are some residents that would like to be involved.
Okay, we'd have to review the ordinance to who the appointing authority is.
For the resident?
Yes.
So, Jerry, the mayor, who would that be? Do you know?
I'd be appointed, would you?
Okay, so how do we go about applying without that?
You wouldn't appoint, but I would appoint somebody.
You would just appoint anybody in the commi- like in the town?
Yeah.
And if I'm reading the ordinance actually right now, it is actually of the discretion of the council to reject any recommendations that the committee makes.
Okay, so I guess we're just wondering like how do we get somebody that is concerned, what somebody who had had concerns revolving around the road was influenced by that, how would he go about getting somebody on with me, since there's no one? Since he just appoints somebody, so like, how would he know who to appoint if nobody said, I want to be involved?
I mean, I can't speak to the mayor's decision-making process, but I'm sure that any member of this governing body is capable of knowing the residents and who have a fairly good job of being able to know who's in tune with the community. I doubt that any one person would recommend someone for a committee on this, again, on this body that would have any other intentions in mind.
I don't think that that would be the case either. I was just wondering how we could go about applying or suggesting someone that, I mean, personally, there's in this room, I mean, somebody who's been involved in the community, who knows more people than Mr. Buckle himself. And he's one who's always involved in the community, so I was just wondering, would we like nominate somebody, recommend somebody, if that would be-
There's no, there's nothing preventing any resident from expressing an interest to get involved in the Borough, so I definitely encourage anyone regarding any committee, not just this one, to get involved and to reach out to us.
Okay, so reach out to you and that has a contact?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to go to the floor? So noted, was it a closed privilege to report?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second. In favor, opposed?
Motion passed.
At this time, first reports?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I have no report tonight. Administrator's report?
Thank you so much. So just, I'll be brief. I'm happy to report that all of our employees are undergoing cybersecurity training. It's an initiative sponsored by our insurance fund. As folks may know, that cybersecurity affects all entities, so, and, you know, as in the course of the training, we learned that the public sector is affected at sixteen percent of all those incidents, so we're going through those. We did have our, at the end of last month, we had our in-service training in sort of customer service, which certainly we always can improve upon. It was a great day. I think it was prudent. We discussed some sort of housekeeping things as well. Our next one will be, I think it's August 30th, it's that Friday right there for Labor Day. Whatever that Friday is, we'll be closed to the public again for in-service and then just also an appreciation lunch for our staff. They work very hard and we wanted to recognize them for their commitment. So, I feel like there was one other thing is something that has been in discussion with the county. I was on the phone with the county engineer last week. I believe that that office has also had conversations with the police department. And they informed us that a temporary traffic light will be put in. They expect by the end of this week at the intersection of Rubine and Madison.
Hey!
So they did perform a study, as we've mentioned in many past meetings. We've not been shared those results, but assuming that based off of that study, they made this decision. So just a heads up through there. And also, you know, I mentioned to the county engineer when we were discussing that, he does not project that to cause any issues with the fireworks display.
Does it affect that?
Absolutely.
Just ask them, because I hate moving assumptions.
If they could time that light with Rubine lights, I don't want to get left out. I don't want rubbery, that's not.
Yeah.
If you light it red, then that was right.
Okay.
It's classified to cover, yeah, because it's falling out of light.
I would like to check that, would you also check, just to check?
I don't like that, my initial assumption, maybe you should call.
Thank you, Council, yeah.
Thank you.
Attorney's report, attorney, our attorney kind of, is he here tonight? Engineer's report?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Relative to sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, the pre-construction meeting will be scheduled for next week. Relative to the Spring Street fire duct and hot fall project, structural repairs to the piers are approximately ninety percent complete. The sanitary sewer has been cleaned and televised. The wire materials will be delivered in approximately three weeks. The Aberdeen Road drainage outfalls processing ninety percent complete. The slower roadway repairs will follow next few weeks. And lastly, the Spring Street drainage outfall commenced today. Relative to the well pump upgrades, well pump number three is operating, well pump number four has been removed. The new pump is expected to be installed by Thursday and then ready for start and testing. Regarding Clinton Street parking lot and pending park improvements, both locations have, are substantially complete and have a punch list which the contractor is working on. And lastly, the backup well, we call it D E P, to discuss the project and do address any comments that they have.
Economic business development, planning zone, police, Councilperson Dana Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As far as police are concerned, I'll just share some of the highlights. There is a report that all of the B councils have received, so please take a look at it. And the plan, the supervisory staff will continue to focus on providing necessary staffing and supervision allocation while keeping overtime costs at a minimum during the calendar year. At the five thirty-one, the end of five thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, approximately thirty-two percent of our budget of overtime has been expended. Two hundred and eighteen and a half overtime hours are expended this month, including shift coverage, investigative follow-ups, cover up for su- coverage for supervision, special events and extended fast normally scheduled shifts due to all volume. Officers provided traffic assistance to forty-seven social duty assignments during this reporting period. Patrolman Nastan Biscavo attended the Rubine Drive Elementary Fun Day on May seventeenth. Members of the Madison Police Department provided traffic detail road coverage for the borough's memorial they create, that many of you attended. The patrol division responded to over one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven calls for service during this reporting period and over five thousand eight hundred and seventy calls here to date so far. Thirty-eight motor vehicle crashes were investigated and a hundred and seventy-two E citations were issued during this reporting period. And during this reporting period, thirty-five arrests were made involving their physics motor vehicle that's recently in occurrence. And that includes my police report. As far as economic business development is concerned, we have the Shark Five K on six A, it was incredibly successful. We have over five hundred runners attend and we did raise eleven thousand dollars for the high school theater program. So thank you to everyone that came out and participated in that. We have rescheduled the car show to July tenth. It was canceled previously due to inclement weather, so I hope to see everybody there. It'll be taking place on Main Street from six to nine. And start planning zoning concern, I have no report and I can do my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Recreation, recycling and sanitation, Councilperson Aldean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
For recycling, we are making some progress on our cigarette receptacle and recycling program. You'll soon see them placed around the borough, reminding people that municipal buildings, properties and parks are smoke-free environments and they should please not discard their butts on the ground, which is generally a good idea. They will be emblazoned with the Madison seal and should be delivered shortly after the artwork is finalized. We're scouting out a few more locations as well, so if you know a place where you see an unusual amount of cigarettes, discarded, please share them with us so we can consider placing a receptacle there as well. Thank you. Fountain should be reinstated by Monday. They were waiting on additional part that was under warranty and with a little luck, Grace hopes that they should take care of the intermittent outage problems. So let's cross our fingers on that. I feel pretty good about the progress on that move forward. I want to thank the Boy Scouts, did a great job cleaning up June eighth in two areas. There were nineteen volunteers and forty-six bags of trash in recycling picked up by our service. So congratulations and thank you. And also, good news, we received twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventeen cents in our Clean Communities grant this year. And I'm sure we will be looking for great ways to spend that, to improve the quality and cleanliness of our borough. In recreation, coming up in just two days, we have our Schools Out Summer Social, Thursday the twentieth, at Redhead Park, six to nine P M. This is a brainchild of my daughter Tessa, who brought the idea to the REIT Committee to fulfill her government's for community service project. She understood that keeping young teens engaged in community events is critical for the health and development of our children and builds community connections. This is something so important to both of us, so I couldn't be more excited and proud to be hosting this event with the amazing Kathy's work as in the whole recreation committee. We will be screening Barbie on a huge early game movie screen. There will be radio control car demos and racing provided by the Hobby Shop, crafts, friendship bracelets, pizza and ice cream, for which we can thank the PBA for sponsorship. And also a huge thank you to the Fire Department for bringing the water turtle out to keep the kids cool on what promises to be a very warm evening. So Bathing Suit and Talon is on the packing list. Should be a fun night for all of our young teens and we hope you will bring your children to it. Also coming up is our annual Fourth of July celebration, which is taking place on June twenty-ninth at Lake Lefferts on Rubine Drive. Not to confuse dates further, we have a range set for the thirtieth. There will be food trucks and fun and live music. It's also the REIT Committee's Peggy Hollins birthday, so let's not miss that. And that will take care of it for those two committees. Thank you.
Councilperson Stephen Russell is not here tonight. DBW Fire, Shetree, Councilperson Brian Lycett?
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Department responded to twenty-six calls within the last month. Kind of busy last two days where they had four, and a lot of them were back-to-back. They had a boom toss last weekend, Free New Fire Department hosted a comedy night as a fundraiser. I was attending by the way myself. It was a funny night. And be on the lookout for October, Washington Engine Company is possibly going to open one as well. As Councilman Phyllis says, the Fire Department will be at the recreation event, so progress. DBW, DBW is partnered with Monmouth County Shetree. As you recall, Wild Act, there was an issue with dead and dying trees on the right side of Aberdeen Road. So probably been working out there yesterday and it should come to conclusion tomorrow as well. Shetree, we're working on redoing our forestry program. It's up every, every three years and we're using a grant to cover that. We're also starting our, our tree inventory. This will be over the next several years as far as taking who came for it, so we're budgeting out five years. And where we have deliverables each of those five years. So where we're, basically what a tree inventory does is just what it sounds. Goes around, looks at all the trees in town and it helps us provide maintenance, faster maintenance of trees. You know, where more coverage, when we go to plant trees, it'll give us locations for that as well. So there is a software involved, so on our July meeting, our provider will come out and start talking about the software and etcetera. And that's all I have there.
Is that for these town property trees?
Yeah, it's all Borough, Borough trees.
Thank you. Councilperson Aldean is not here tonight. Construction of environmental finance, Councilperson Aldean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I discussed it last week. Can you give me an update on the church property that finalized, not finalized?
Not final, not finalized. Our attorney did meet with representation from the church last week, which was prudent and we're just waiting on finalization of that, so hopefully soon.
You don't see any, like, uh, delays? Typical lawyer, okay.
I don't foresee any delays at the moment.
Right, that, another question is, and there is a being, being, well, I need to tell you specifically what actually causes it to be a special event. Been hearing a lot the last two weeks, what do we consider a special event, or say, simple?
So actually, I was trying to familiarize myself a little bit with the ordinance right now, and so I can't speak completely accurately on it, but it looks like it largely is meant to address events that come from externally. And so it looks like it was largely charged with one of its main goals, the creative application, which we do use. And members of this, the directors of Department of Public Works, the police and various other departments do opine on applications for the use of our facility. So it looks like that was one main sort of explanation for this.
Music customers, or else our company wants to come do something about it, we'll have to see their special records, something to tell you. The sponsors or not?
Yeah, we get, yeah, we get regulation facility requests from various different organizations, including like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts. So what I'm imagining now, reading this ordinance, is this was the sort of the impetus for the application in which we still use today for determining who gets to use what space, when, where, why, how much, etcetera.
But I can add something. A couple of years ago, there was a major event in town. It went on for some weeks. It was the Shark commemorating, the, not the Shark. Turbines commemorate, but it was memorializing a numerous of the Shark attacks that occurred at Madison. It went on for a couple of weeks. It was a major special events committee. We used various department houses, writing a dedicated, to ensure a safe and guidance on how the event progressed and how it came along. We worked with the Madison Historical Society. We worked with the Madison Historical Sites Commission. And again, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Fire prevention, etcetera. And there were minutes that are taken at that meeting and black code, the clerk just attends those meetings and takes those minutes. They are in file in my office and anytime, that's exactly what it is. It is for a special outside event that's going to be conducted in the Borough.
Yeah, so whatever it is, I couldn't decide, don't decide outside, nothing ever, outside.
Yes, anytime there is a special events committee, meeting, there is, it is hosted by the clerk. The clerk does take the minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me go. Thank you. On the consent agenda, Resolutions twenty-four dash oh six dash twelve to Resolution twenty-four dash oh six dash fifteen and including Resolution forty-four dash oh six dash nineteen, we'll do a must. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed.
On the new business, Resolution forty-four dash oh six dash sixteen, Resolution of Borough Council of Borough Madison, Mountain County, New Jersey, with the right of executive amendment, the redevelopment agreement between Borough Madison and Forestland Park, Chairman Associates LLC. Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got it, I just question that, sorry. Can you tell the town we're with?
Sure, sure. So we already had an agreement with them. That's the property that is in order of Madison production, essentially.
Make a statement, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
So we, we've had redevelopment agreement with them for quite some time, as I'm sure you're aware. Basically, we asked to put the timeline into an agreement, to update the timeline, so this includes the timeline.
Okay.
For them to meet deliverable dates, which are in the resolution.
Okay, good. And quick, Mayor, no vote, please?
Councilperson Dana Dunn? Yes. Councilperson Alden Pyrus?
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Lycett?
Yes.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash oh six dash seventeen, enter the votes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed.
And at this time, move to the floor.
Frank, can you get my microphone?
Anthony, Washington, sixteen Orchard Street. The lights in the park, the Clinton Street Park are on at the wrong times. You know, the building, the little community building itself, the lights will be on like six o'clock. It's not dark out there. Basketball court lights come on too early, so I was just hoping someone could address this. I probably could have brought it up to DBW, but it's still happening.
What, what time did it come on?
Uh, the community building, it was six o'clock and I noticed that.
So that's the outside right in front of the basketball court around the same time, don't?
Yeah, yeah, I think the timer is in the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. John Serto, twenty-nine Crescent Place, Madison. I have a lot of time on my hands lately, unfortunately, and I'd been doing a pretty significant review of this Restore Madison page. And I've noted with concern that acknowledgements almost exclusively highlight Democratic members for their support of various council initiatives. While I commend the dedication of these members, I am compelled to inquire about the rationale behind the exclusion of Republican counterparts who have equally contributed to these initiatives. As stewards entrusted with the responsibility of representing all Madison taxpayers, it is imperative for the Restore Madison team to uphold the principles of inclusivity and transparency and portraying council activities. This entails the fair recognition of all members who have played pivotal roles in advancing initiatives regardless of their political affiliation. Additionally, it is crucial to acknowledge that the utilization of Madison Borough employees in the Restore Madison posts, all of our, all of our taxpayers pay for that, not just the Restore Madison supporters. I respectfully urge you to consider the importance of acknowledging the collective efforts of the entire council, transcending political affiliations. Our town thrives on the diversity of political perspectives and it's paramount that every voter is informed about the positive contributions by all council members. I have one other statement. Okay, this is regarding the contract for photography. I informally requesting regarding the annual contract value of the professional photography services engaged by the borough funded by taxpayer resources. Upon review, it appears that photos taken by the taxpayer-funded professional photographer predominantly featured Democratic council persons and Restore Madison persons, Madison members. I am requesting data on the following points. Provide the volume of photographs captured by the contracted professional photographer during their annual engagement. Furnish the number of photographs showcasing Councilman Charlie Ross individually. Furnish the number of photographs showcasing Councilwoman Melanie Wang individually. Furnish the qua- quantity of photographs featuring both Councilman Charlie Ross and Councilwoman Melanie Wang together, excluding any Democratic, any Democratic council persons or members of Restore Madison. Provide the numbers of photographs depicting interactions with at least one Democratic council person and at least one Republican council person. Provide the number of photographs featuring one or more Democratic members or one or more Restore Madison members exclusively. And disclose the number of photographs taken with one or more members of the Restore Madison team without any Republican council members present in the photograph. Your prompt attention to this matter would be greatly appreciated as it pertains to transparency and accountability within our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else to move to the floor? Motion opposed, move to the floor?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed.
And motion to Resolution twenty-four dash oh six dash eighteen, motion to adjourn to the executive session.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed. Thank you for coming out after tonight.